On the next picture.
That's me.
So it'll be, you know, a good height for most people. The one they did at Washers School in Lafayette, they only put one foot in the ground, so it's a lot higher than the little. But we encourage, we encourage kids to be involved. When we did the McMinnville School District, we had the kids from my Peace Village, which were elementary school kids, talk about what peace meant to them with the school superintendent and a bunch of Rotarians. And I don't see why the school and the city should be separate, that we, you know, they are separate organizations, but we can work together on doing things.
Right, certainly on the dedications.
I think they're only separate in the sense of the approval process and the financial aspect of it, but otherwise I think we can certainly coordinate with them.
Was there a question or?
No, no, I'm just saying, the school district, they have to approve it and they have to handle the finance part, but aside from that, the city and the school district, I'm sure we could work together.
Yeah, and you know, we subsidize it and if it has to be, my Rotary Club can subsidize a little bit more. Yeah, we just did a peace fair on the International Day of Peace and raised some money for projects like this. And then I'm also working with the Coelos to put some peace polls in Amity and then I have Amhill County covered.
Lafayette's got theirs?
Seven in Lafayette. And I'm working with the mayor to try, I have two at the entrance coming from Newburgh and I want to have one on the entrance coming from McMinnville. And then we have the community center, Washers School and the downtown Abigail Scott Dunaway Park. And then Dayton has the two schools, the City Hall and the entrance to Dayton sign, there's a peace poll there.
Well, where are we guys? What do you think we want to do here? Definitely want to get it onto the agendas.
Won't be on tonight's agenda, but work to get it on next month's agenda, yeah.
Unless you'd like to add an agenda item at the beginning?
Well, I guess we could.
It's always an option.
Given the lightness of our council tonight, I think it might be best if we had more of the counselors involved in this.
I'm sure you're fine with that, Larry, right? We told November for our meeting, yeah. I agree, Linda, I think we should probably have more of a representation here of our counselors.
So are we agreed on, we're agreed on that? Try to get it onto the November agenda and have some conversation a little bit more about this. Thank you for coming over tonight and taking the time to come over and tell us about this.
Totally my pleasure. I can do this again if there's more people that missed the meeting or I can do a one-on-one.
For whatever the reason, we are short tonight.
Amanda, it's not a hard sell, it's something that I think every community should want to do and let's talk about how to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you for bringing the pole with you because that's really exciting to see it in person.
Glad it's not 50 pounds.
I was watching you carry that in and I thought, wait a minute.
It's pretty light. It's hollow inside and.
Can you fit it in your car?
It just fits in. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council?
Yes.
I was just thinking before we get to the November meeting, maybe we should discuss the locations and how many, so that there's a plan when it gets there for his decision. And then also be able to give Larry contacts to the school, who he should contact, like we know Amanda at the elementary school. I saw that public safety is one that they probably are going to want to talk to the chief and then also have a plan of what we want to propose for languages. So I don't know how we do that before November, but it would be nice to take it to November for a yes or a no, because then we're going to get to November and then ask the same questions.
I agree that we should have, you know, a little bit more solid and concrete.
I need a committee.
We need a peace poll committee. Just enough that we just, like he already, he already has the locations, he wants, you know, the.
He's pretty, yeah, he's got it pretty well nailed.
Carlton, it would be the elementary, he wants one here at the Civic Center. I believe he said Lad Park. And then American Legion, maybe? I can't, I didn't remember hearing every location he hadn't picked for.
The two schools, the Civic Center here, so I don't know if we have room for it. That would be a big decision right there. The two schools have to decide on their own and the upper part, Lad Park, so we.
So our decision would be Lad Park, the Civic Center.
And even if you want one or if it can even fit here, so we don't know about that.
And then coordinate with the school districts as far as like Legion or any other business, that would probably involve, you know, outreach to the businesses and Larry can do that, you know. Maybe once this gets started, it's going to catch on with some of the other businesses in town.
So in the meantime, Amy and I can send in the compacts for the non-city things, so he can get started. And then for the agenda, it would be the city pieces, the Lad Park, maybe Winneburg Park, I don't know, but that would be a count, you know, that's a council decision. I think the Civic Center, we've got enough flower beds, it takes, it's got a small footprint. And we could watch the irrigation. But it'd be nice to have a council ceremony at the time of that dedication.
Whenever, given the development? Well, not the development, but the winter flooding, I don't think that they'd really get.
So we'd have the Civic Center for City, Lad Park.
Public Works Office.
It's possible to do one at the lower park by the gazebo.
Oh, by the one, because that's where we're hopefully going to have some music in the park is down by.
The one, the gazebo we put in a few years ago, yeah.
I just thought of a third, we also have Pond Creek Park.
Yeah, Pond Creek would be a nice one to put in there.
It's not in there, but that's some things to consider on what locations before it hits the agenda. So what do you think would be good next steps? Maybe sending into all tall council for some ideas of locations?
And I, I guess.
So each poll, he said it's about $250.
That's the other thing to consider, is how many are we going to?
And the Rotary does subsidize some, I think he said $90, yeah, the poll.
And the languages, it's going to be a choice. I just don't, my concern is you're going to get to November and then it'll be a discussion rather than a decision.
Yeah, I would, I'd prefer that we make a decision and have everything in order.
And I think, you know, we have this application form as a guide. So, you know, we first of all make our decisions about what we're getting and then start looking at that because that's what we want the council to approve, is we want to fill this out and send it to him. And I guess my feeling, instead of putting, you know, 20 polls in Carlton, that we just start in a conservative way and a couple, and I think most of our tourists are up in this area of town, even to get them to come down here to the Civic Center is probably off their trail, most of them will see it in Lad Park.
Lad Park will be the biggest decision.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, I think if we feel like people are really, you know, liking it and then we can make them sprout in other places around town.
I do think it's important to have it here somewhere at the Civic Center, yeah. I, I do think it's important to have it here somewhere at the Civic Center, yeah.
There's could be room out by the flagpole.
Yeah, we've got room by the flagpole, that'd be a nice location.
That would be very good, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it would be very visible because that is highly traveled with traffic and, um, people pulling in and out on both sides.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And he mentioned Pollinator Garden, and we have that hanging somewhere in suspense. But again, that was going to be designed for kids to help with and be near a kid neighborhood and all that. But doesn't exist right now, so there's no point in ordering a poll for it.
Well, I need to, I need to get back in touch with her. And, um, I wonder if the company that she works with would be interested in helping to subsidize one of them.
Oh, I could see that. Um, so an update on the Pollinator Garden. They've laid foundation for the sidewalk. The fence has been ordered, the ground's going to be tilled, and then we're going to be moving the boxes.
The boxes.
Yes, so, um, and then we'll have them get planted. We also had a place called Bee Local. Um, that wants to put two little bee boxes inside.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes, but I don't know the details enough to speak to it. I did reach out because he asked me about it and I just said, I need details to present.
Yeah.
Um, but that might be a good place eventually.
Yeah.
What's, what is the location of the Pollinator Garden?
It's at First and, what's across their grant?
Uh, First and Monroe.
First and Monroe.
Yeah, where the, um.
It's, it's a.
Just past the townhomes.
Okay, oh.
It's a block north, but is it just that little square patch?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not the strip behind the apartment building?
No, it's a small, and I think by the time we get the boxes in it.
Not for the.
It, it's going to have a faucet in there.
Yeah.
It's got, the front, it's got a cattle gate in front with fence masters on the side and the back.
So they can't park their cars there.
No.
Well, there was a very large truck that owned the spot. For free.
But that's just an update, but I think that, I think Carolyn, your suggestion by starting small, getting one in Lad Park and the Civic Center would get the rolling for Carlton.
Yeah.
It'd be something that you can talk with council. And then your biggest thing would be having the list of languages that you want to put on the two polls.
So for the languages, for the languages in this area, I don't know. But you guys through history, looking up, what were or were there Indian tribes?
That's a good question.
That's the Kalapuan. And it's, uh, it is a known language and we put, I was going to ask him if he's actually done one of those. But they're quite, uh, a big tribe that, you know, covered from Oregon City out to the Grand Round and all like that.
Okay.
So we know allegedly the native people that were here.
And we could reach out to Ms. Davis, the principal at the elementary, just to see what languages they're working with, with the kids currently.
That would, yeah.
I think Larry had asked as far as the contact at the school district. We identify who that is and then make a sort of coordinated introduction for him. So he isn't making a cold call.
Amy, probably facilitate getting him to the schools and the contact for that.
I can get him the contact of the school board secretary, who works with the school superintendent.
Right.
For all the schools.
And I think for us as the city council, you know, if we, if we decide to approve the polls for the Civic Center, Lad Park, and wherever else we decide to do it. But, you know, that should be our focus. And then anything else that happens in Carlton is really going to be up to the businesses. And, you know, it's not our responsibility to coordinate that. But hopefully, you know, some businesses will see it, go, well, I want to do that. But that's kind of going to be up to them, I think. I mean, that's my opinion about it.
I think you, our guys are right on it. Start small, do a couple city ones and go from there.
Give us something to look at and think about.
Mm-hmm. I just think it'll help in November's agenda to kind of bet and then we can ask what languages. And then I like the Kalapuni, ask him in Kalapuni. Is that how they say it, right? Um, if, if he has a translation.
Okay. We good? Okay. Then we will call this meeting closed. The work session.
Yeah.
Agreed. Okay, we will close the work session and we've got a few minutes before we start.
Twenty-five, actually.
Yes. A second. So six fifty-nine. We don't want to start it precipitously. There we go. Okay, so it is seven o'clock and we are at Tuesday, October the first, 2024. This is the October meeting of the Carlton City Council. Could we have the roll call, please?
All right. Counselor Ward Mullen. Counselor Erickson.
Here.
Counselor Thompson Riser.
Present.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Absent tonight is Counselor Skipper, Hill and Brendow.
Thank you. Could you join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
Where's the class?
It's all right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of the religious fans, one nation, under God, in the name of our Lord.
Circle? Okay. Um, changes or additions to the agenda? Are there any changes or additions to tonight's agenda?
I have none, Mayor.
All righty. Are there any ceremonies, appointments or announcements?
Not from our end.
Anybody, okay. All right, so this is the section of the agenda that allows citizen comments. Members of the public may address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, the members of the public shall come forward and state their name and street address and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. Uh, we start with item A, which are items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to make any comments? Thank you. So we will move to item B, which is items that are on the agenda. Do we have anybody that would wish to speak to anything that is on the agenda tonight? All righty, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
From the consent agenda, okay.
On the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And that takes us to ordinances, resolutions, discussion and action items. Um, item A is FEMA pre-implementation compliance measures. And we're going to hear from city planner Scott White.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, Scott White, McMinnville, Amity Valley, Council of Governments and Contract Planner of the city of Carlton. Uh, I have a PowerPoint presentation that helps to digest this stuff a little bit. So, um, I'll ask that that come on the screen. Is this, it's loading, okay. Just a little slow.
Will it show on the back screen? That would be good. Hmm.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, as part of your packet tonight, you received some information specific to floodplains. Um, as the title of screen run, one there reads, uh, these are potential updates to the Carlton Development Code, specific to floodplain management. We have a chapter, uh, chapter seventeen point five-six for that purpose. Uh, and specifically for implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act. Uh, if I can, next slide, please. So, uh, as part of your packet this evening, we have a memo. And the first page of that memo, uh, provides a summary issue here. We, uh, uh, do not have a code that addresses some of the things that FEMA has recently passed along to cities throughout the state. Uh, this is specific to, uh, pre-implementation compliance measures. And it's sort of, uh, there's sort of an acronym for that. It's PICOM for short. But these were adopted by, uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA uh, to comply with, uh, the Endangered Species Act. This applies to a number of cities and, uh, uh, local governments throughout the state. Uh, and there is a deadline, uh, for cities to, uh, to, to make a, to pick an option, basically. Uh, on this slide shows generally what those, those three are. Uh, adopt the, uh, the new FEMA model code, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Uh, is, is the one option, the option that staff is, is recommending to, to council to pick. Uh, option two is to not adopt any ordinance change, a change to the development code, but to just process development proposals, uh, consistent, uh, the way the city has through kind of a permit-by-permit basis. The permit is the, the city's, uh, floodplain development permit. That's the name of the permit, uh, when that permit is applicable. We talked a little about, about that option as well. And then option three is to prohibit all development in the floodplain. Uh, not an option we recommend, but, uh, we'll talk about that as well. Next slide, please. So there's a long fifteen-year history on this topic. It began back in two thousand nine. Uh, it was a lawsuit against FEMA by another federal agency. Didn't know that they could do that, but, uh, that's how things began. And, uh, the, um, part of your packet there, you have Exhibit A, parts one and two, that provides additional background on the, the long fifteen-year history there. Uh, one is, um, a planner at the, uh, at the COG, Jim Jacks. And he's, uh, very familiar with all of the, the history, uh, what, what transpired. Uh, but, uh, you can see in the bullet notes there just kind of what occurred. Um, we have the, uh, the, the biological opinion, or another acronym, BIOP, is, uh, what was issued back in two thousand sixteen. And, uh, just about a year ago, uh, same agencies that had sued FEMA, um, sued them again alleging that, uh, you're taking too long to implement the BIOP. And, uh, just, uh, a few months ago, July of this year, FEMA announced, uh, these, uh, PICOM short-term measures and gave the deadline that I mentioned, uh, of July one. And just a month ago was when they, um, produced the new model code and said, uh, hey, here's what you can do for that option one, as I mentioned. So as a result of the BIOP, local governments, uh, require to demonstrate how development inside the hundred-year floodplain, nowhere else, uh, complies with, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program. There's an Endangered Species Act integration, so it's a lot of words there. Uh, next, next slide, please. In addition to a long background, a long, uh, history of this, uh, there's a number of, uh, acronyms and terms and definitions, uh, some that you'll probably be familiar with and new ones that are introduced, uh, by, uh, by FEMA. And so, uh, FEMA has a website that's sort of devoted to all of this stuff. I did want to identify one definition of that being related to development in the floodplain. Uh, the Carlton Development Code has two definitions for development. Uh, one applies where, uh, it's not, the hundred-year floodplain is not relevant. And this particular one that's on the, the, um, on the slide is, uh, one that pertains to development in the floodplain. And so you can see in the highlighted part there, it's, uh, it's all encompassing. There's a lot of things, uh, that qualify as development. Uh, and that's sort of the threshold for a, a floodplain development permit. So, um, if Amy were to say, hey, we've got somebody who wants to do some paving or grading in what appears to be the hundred-year floodplain, we would say, yes, you have a, have to come to the city and go through, uh, floodplain development permit. And we would explain what, what that's all about. So, uh, that's existing, uh, definition that's inside our development code. And it's consistent with the current model code, uh, and it's the same that you'll find in federal law. And so there's, there's a definition that's, uh, in a lot of other city development codes as well. Um, so I just want to kind of get, I don't want to go through all of those, uh, terms and acronyms. I'm going to, next slide there, but just kind of give you an idea of, of all of the, the things there. Um, I did want to show this map. It's Exhibit B of your, your, your packet there, the memo. Um, so, uh, salmon and steelhead, uh, it's really the recovery domains. That's that area inside the green line there, uh, is where, uh, the, I think it was NOAA, National Marine Fisheries Services has designated as areas that, uh, salmon and steel have, had, have the ability to, to recover. It's not so much them being in every, uh, uh, creek or tributary or, or such. Um, it's, it's a, a large area. Uh, the, the other, um, endangered species is the southern killer whale. Uh, that's not of relevancy here for, for Carlton. Uh, next, next, sure, buddy, yeah. Yeah, so this, uh, slide is what we, uh, refer. This is, uh, something you can go on FEMA's website and see the floodplains that are applicable to, uh, the city of Carlton. Uh, it's a good website, they update it, uh, really well. It used to be, uh, in the old days, uh, prior to all the kind of website stuff is when we had the community panel maps and you kind of had to fold them out and look at that things. But, uh, FEMA's pretty good with updating their, their website for various communities. Uh, the yellow line that's shown there is the boundary, uh, city limit lines. And there's basically two major floodplains inside the city limits there. At least, uh, more of kind of a portion of Yam Hill there. Uh, and in the southwest, um, sort of corner of that, that city area there, you see the wavy lines. Those indicate, uh, base flood, uh, elevations that are known. That means that FEMA has actually studied where the floodplain, the base floodplain is in that particular area of the city. Uh, there's another area, of course, the, um, uh, Han Creek Flood Plain. And, uh, that doesn't have the wavy lines through it. And that means that it is, uh, an area, it's called an approximate A-zone. And that's where, if anybody is interested in developing in that area. And that's where if anybody is interested in developing in that area, we tell them that you have to study it. You have to tell us what the floodplain is in that particular area. So a little bit difficult. And we have some guidelines. The federal government does provide some guidelines of how to, to do the study. And it's been done in past development applications to the city as well. The little finger that, that sticks out there, that indicates that there's been a letter of map revision, or what's called a LOMAR. And so that finger was once shown as part of a floodplain, but somebody said, no, it's, it's not. And presented evidence to the, the federal government, FEMA, and FEMA agreed. And so the next slide, please.
I have a question before we go on. So when was the last time that FEMA updated their floodplain map for Carlton?
Good question. I know in two thousand nine, right here, this slide is when they added, it could have been two thousand nine. Do you know offhand, Amy, and what the flood plains you've seen, the flood maps? I know in two thousand nine, this is when Han Creek was added, because I researched that.
I believe the finger addition was removed around the time of J.R. Meadows or Indicarlton Crest.
Okay, so that was after, yeah. Yeah, so the finger, they, so they, they can update those pretty well to show that. And so you can see on this map, the finger is gone.
I don't see that finger.
Yeah, they won't see, oh, you can go back to the other one, if you like, where the finger.
Can you point it out where it is?
Yeah, oh, there it is, hey. There's the, yeah. Kind of looks like a finger, I don't know. And so the, in the next slide, it would subtracted it there. So it's not in the, that's gone. So that's just a cleaner map here, just showing parcel boundaries and not the aerial photograph of where Han Creek and, and the flood plains for Yam Hill River are, are located. So yeah, this is an overlay. This is again, if development falls, a proposal for development, including the city's development too. If the city has a capital improvement project, hey, we're gonna do something in the floodplain, a, you know, a pipe, a utility pipe or something like that. That, that is also subject to a floodplain development permit. Next slide, please. So I want to just go through the options that FEMA has presented. Option one, to adopt the FEMA model code, which essentially means replacing the existing standards and definitions, or I should maybe say updating, but will essentially be a replacement, follows the same format that's shown in the existing chapter of the city development code. And the other option there is to not do the code amendment, but to review development on a permit by permit basis. But to inform applicants as to the need for assessing the potential impact to, to species and habitat. And so what we would do as part of our oral and written communication to applicants is direct them to FEMA website. There is a, a guide for that purpose. We would say the Carlton Code does not address the extent to which FEMA says you have to do all of this stuff. So option three, prohibit. It's not so easy with, with that, to just prohibit activity in the floodplain as Carlton Code, as do many other city codes allow development in the floodplain with limits. Next slide, please. So this is kind of advantages, disadvantages. Before leaving on vacation, Shannon said, oh, make sure you give the council an idea of what the advantages are or disadvantages of one option over the other. And so this is, this is all my stuff. It's not really, it kind of came to my head, not what FEMA produced. But I do want to, you know, we're, we're recommending that, the model code. And hopefully we kind of made clear that, to that in some of the bullet notes that we have here under advantage. The one that's circled there is, is most important. It's just advantageous for decision makers like yourself and the planning commission to, to access, to find where it is right in city code as opposed to going someplace on a, another website and searching through a bunch of things. So that's the, the key advantage that we see. This stuff is all new. And so there might be some refinement later on with it. Amy and I watched a, a long webinar. There were, what, four hundred? I don't know how many people, there was a lot of people attending the webinar, asking questions, left really good questions. And so it stirred a lot of thought. And how this will play out in practice has yet to be seen. So I would suspect that there may need to be some cleanup, some amendments after it's, if the council says, yeah, let's go for the model code option. Yeah, it may come back and they'll say, well, FEMA made some compromises here and there. So the thing, there isn't any money for this. FEMA, FEMA is providing information resources, webinars, and assisting in that capacity, but not providing grants. So that's kind of the, the thing here is that there's no money available for staff time. Although it's not a, you know, it's not a significant amendment to the development code. And then finally, the, the option that just says prohibit development in the floodplain, while that's sort of a simple option. It brings all sorts of questions. Again, the current code allows development in the floodplain, just it's, it's, it's regulated as such to ensure that, you know, the capacity, the function of the floodplain remains as is. I, I'm not, no, Tyler's not here to talk on what sort of taking claims that may occur with the risks of the, of the city might, might be under that circumstance. But it would amount to changing the code. So if you were to take that option of just, nah, you know, nothing's allowed in the floodplain, there, there would be an amendment for that purpose. So really, the key difference there between options one and two is how the city would communicate these standards to those who take interest in, in doing something in the floodplain. Again, just those areas that we had shown on the map. And, you know, do we direct them to the city's code where we've made the amendments? Or do we direct them to elsewhere? And does that hold through posterity? So one, one more slide, I think I have after this, I think. Oh, I got a couple more. But yeah, just we did some Q and A where you can find additional information is on the FEMA website there. The entire model code is there. We didn't put it in as part of the packet because it's fairly large. And there's some parts that do not apply to Carlton. There's some parts that would apply to coastal cities. It's, there's some key terms, which I didn't bring a lot of them into. I didn't want to make this all very long presentation. In fact, it's probably too long for you right now. But no net loss is kind of the key term that, there's a, a new definition for that. And that's what we're asking applicants to address, is no net loss to, to habitat with respect to what they might be proposing to do in the floodplain. Next slide, please. So it's really just that one chapter, seventeen fifty-six. I really just localized there for, for change to the code. It was not introduced earlier as part of the, the comprehensive changes that we did because it just wasn't available. And so we kind of knew that it was coming. We got some heads up from, from certain people on that, but it just wasn't available. And what happens if, if council decides we're just not going to do anything? There's kind of a default. It's option two there that if you don't do anything, then, well, it still applies. But yeah, so we would just have to be mindful of additional habitat provisions that are not addressed in the development code and, and be ready to communicate that to anybody who wants to remember right. One more slide, I think that's, yeah, this is the last slide. And the action requested is selecting a PICOM option. And yeah, there's a timeline there too. I mean, this is something that goes through two hearings. It's a legislative update. So we would have a first hearing before the planning commission, and they would form a recommendation to you. The second hearing, yeah, before council for adoption of an ordinance. That timeline there is the fastest that we could put this together. It might more, more be in the line of maybe March or April that we would have it to you. But there's kind of a deadline of July. Yeah, July, I think it is of, of two thousand twenty-five, where the, the model ordinance would have to be effective. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
So if I understand correctly, if the council chose not to adopt the model regulations, that option two, the, the developer still is subject to the same requirements, right?
Correct.
But, but having the model agreement is, sort of provides clarity to it. So that it's just set forth in stone, everybody understands.
Correct, yeah.
I'll think of it in a minute.
Yeah.
I have a question about why Carlton Development Code currently allows development in the floodplain, though limited and restricted, it does not prohibit. And I heard you say things like, well, the city might need to get a sewer pipe through the floodplain over to the lagoons and stuff like that. But I guess the city needs in floodplain activities like pipes and utilities, are they the same as building houses in the floodplain?
Yeah, so it's a really good question, because yeah. You know, why would you want to build in a floodplain, a hundred-year event occurs? And then all of a sudden, my, my sister lives in South Carolina. I've been watching all of the, yeah, yeah, wow, why would you ever want to even live there? I don't know. But yeah, the idea of the floodplain is to ensure in the hazard event that you have that capacity. It's not the, the floodway, but the floodplain. And so you have all of this, this water that, that needs to go somewhere. And there are a lot of structures that are, are built up. So that, that's the option is that you can still maintain the, the function of the, the floodplain, where you can kind of go, sometimes go underneath the, the structure, and you have vents that go out. Certainly, there are some things that, that can be still done. Yeah, yeah, so you can still build in the floodplain. We got water underneath it, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. And if it's in the, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so it is still possible to, to, to do that. And there are a lot of, if you do decide to do that, there, there certainly, it gets into elevation certificates. You have to have a surveyor out there. You have to document how the, the floor, the base floor elevation of the building is one foot above that wiggly line that was on the, the map there. If it's known in the city, that has to be above that, that, that line. So yeah, just, just lots of regulations in effect, but the city does not prohibit development in the floodplain.
I'd clicked on those links since I was looking a little bit at the model agreement. One of the advantages, I think, of the, of the option one is that there is certain things that can, can be done that, that do not involve building a structure that are, would be much easier to get through without going through all of this process to approve it. You know, like walking trails as, as an example, there's a number of things.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, there, you know, there's that option. When we talk to those who are interested in developing property that, that is in the floodplain, we, we've identified certain options that the development code has. The plan unit development is, is one that applicants have. It may not be what, a choice that they, they make. But plan unit development, you can concentrate the the building of the site, same density, just kind of shifted away from the, the floodplain. So the, the code does have that, that option, should an applicant choose to pursue that. It's kind of up to the applicant to do that. But yeah, that, that is a.
Do I understand that with this new, whether we adopt the model agreement or not, that, that there's going to be more strenuous requirements on development, developers going forward?
It generally, yes. There is now this extra layer of evaluating habitat. That has not been the traditional function of FEMA. And probably the reason they were, they were sued. They are, like a lot of federal agencies, they are required to address endangered species by the act that was adopted in the seventies or something like that. But yeah, this is kind of their response is, okay, well, yeah, it's kind of incumbent upon the, the cities that participate in the National Flood Plan, Flood Insurance Program to, to, you know, to, to do all of this and inform people accordingly. But yeah, there, there are some things like a buffer area. There probably will be additional mitigation measures to take out a tree. You may have to plate, replace the tree, that sort of thing. Where that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily a requirement by FEMA in the past. They were more concerned about the, the loss of the storage capacity, the primary function in a flood event. The mechanics of it, unless the, the environment.
So with that option one, say if we were to go with option one, can the city then add additional items that developers have to stay within the parameters of?
The city could. The focus of, of what we would be doing is pretty much just bringing forward to the city what, what the new requirements are in the model code. So you could, this is where Tyler might weigh in to assess whether or not it's too, you know, something that it becomes too, too regulatory. And you may hear some additional thoughts from property owners on that topic as well. So yeah, really what we would be doing is announcing through notices that what we propose is to adopt the model code standards. And we would have that, that ready in a, in, in a form. And I mean, pretty much what, what is available right now online.
If we did do that, then could we put an addition on there that says, you know, no actual building structures within the floodplain, other than mechanical sewer pipes, water pipes, those types, you know, that kind of mechanical.
So it would, yeah, we'd have to be specific about that. But yeah. Yeah, to the extent that, yeah, we, we would probably have to be, be clear as to what those additional standards are beyond the model code. It would be appropriate to, to notify people accordingly.
Sorry, so we do have to have a decision by December one. That doesn't mean we have to have any type of code finalized by December one, but we do have to have a decision by the council of directive of which option that Scott has very descriptively described here for us.
So is that something that you staff would like tonight?
Ideally, but we do have, we do have some time. I mean, like I said, December one, so you have, we could put it on November's agenda if you would like to to have more time to can just chew on it a bit um, and have the input of the other three counselors that are missing.
You have a proposed resolution? In the packet here?
Uh, not for this topic.
Do we need to vote on it?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight. If you would like to, we could add it to November's agenda if you if you want to take more time to consider the options.
Well, I guess I say that permit by permit would be probably an endless nightmare and to do a total prohibition. Another awkwardness, so I think we're kind of in a box.
I could see a lot of problems with that.
Option one is the only option.
Do you want to use mine? Go ahead.
I mean, I've, I don't need more time. I've made my decision, so it's up to the rest of you, if you want to put it on November.
I feel the same. You know, I don't need to wait.
You're you're, you're, I mean, technically you do have quorum, you are a majority of the council. Um, so if if you you'd all have to kind of be on board at this point to kind of be in agreement to move forward. Planning Commission would be the next step.
Correct, yeah.
Option one. I, that would be my preference, yes, but I don't think so.
Okay, all right, so I'm hearing option one is that, uh, yeah, so that basically that would start the um, uh, process for uh, for for a hearing. And notice and things like that, so. And there'll be more on this. You'll get the to see what parts of that model code um, apply to uh, to to Carlton. Uh, but it is available uh, online to to see and what what's there. Uh, you'll probably hear some testimony too from maybe some property owners that have the interest in.
Given the number of property owners we've got in this town who have sump pumps, I think there might be some comments.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we will move forward then.
But if we adopt this resolution, I need some help here and developing this resolution of what we're approving exactly, but.
There's there's technically not a resolution for this agenda item. Because this is just, you're just discussing what option you want to.
Consensus then.
It's just a consensus because this 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 will actually go to the planning commission first for a formal hearing and then as it's an ordinance, it will come back to you a couple of times.
Yeah, that's a good summary there. Uh, the minutes will probably reflect uh, that now when you have the the minutes, the next meeting, we'll say that the council talked about it and option one was what what the general consensus was. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Master fee schedule.
Yes, so mayor and council, uh, as Scott has mentioned and referred to a couple of times in the last topic, uh, we were just did a development code update and in that update, uh, there was several meetings that we had work sessions and we kind of talked about different topics and ideas. And in that um, final code were some fees that were written into the development code. Um, some of them we knew were coming and some of them I was kind of caught off guard that we didn't have, but would actually makes complete sense that we have then. In the memo here, there are three actual fees that were noted in the development code that we don't have a fee for in our master fee schedule. Um, one of those being the vacation rental license, it is no longer a business license. It's an actual annual re- license has to be renewed. We didn't have that in our, when we updated in uh, June, our master fee schedule. And so we do need to have that in there so that I can notify the vacation rental owners of the new fee that is due January one. So I'd like to give them a little bit of time, um, so they can process it as well. Uh, the other two, one was a grading permit fee. Um, this one, I reached out to the city engineer Gordon Monroe for his thoughts on a proposal for fee. He said five hundred plus five percent of the construction cost. So if you think of that as a subdivision going in, it is five hundred dollars and then five percent of the total construction costs on top of that. Of putting the subdivision in, not without, not with the houses, just the actual. Um, because they do have to come out and check each lot. It is going to be quite time consuming, so that fee's a little bit higher, but there's a lot more staff time that's involved in that. Um, and then transcript script free fee is just actual cost, staff time and materials. We don't really have that request very often. Um, I've never actually got it, but it was actually written into the code and I just found it when I was going through the other one, so. Our code and our master fee schedule should match ideally. So if you have any questions, I am, I'm game.
The vacation vacation rental license, that's two hundred dollars a year or?
It's an annual renewal for two hundred dollars a year.
What is it going from to?
So it
To two hundred, was it going?
Well, it used to be the business license fee, um, so it was one hundred for the first year and then every year subsequent that we're operation was fifty dollars. So we increased the vacation rental application fee because the staff time that our planner has charged us has increased since twenty two twelve, two thousand nine, when it was installed last time upgraded. So it wasn't covering the planner's time, so the application fee is now proportioned. Um, and then the annual business, uh, excuse me, vacation rental license is a brand new fee.
We talked about that though, right?
We did, we touched, we touched on it a little bit. Um, we actually talked about it quite a bit more. And believe it was a few months before we started going into the development code, we had a big we almost got through an ordinance of a vacation rental up date, um, but then Scott said we should probably hold off and wait until we do the development code that was just around the corner.
Well, I know that the council approved and authorized the mayor to sign resolution number twenty twenty-four dash three six one. Updating the master fee schedule, revising fees and charges for the city of Carlton with the rates included in the adoption of the um, Y twenty-five budget.
Yeah, I second that.
Seconded twice, I think we. All in favor? Proposed? Motion carries. Okay, item C, proposed twenty twenty-five council meeting calendar.
So this one shouldn't look uncommon because we've done it a couple of times now. Um, so on the graph in the center, you, the left side of the column is council and the first meeting um, proposed dates and the right one is the planning commission, just for reference. Um, there, there's one date that I do need confirmation from the council, that is for the goal setting. Right now, we have it tentatively. Uh, we have Jensen's strategies on board for eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, so we just need confirmation on what works best for council. So we can get them um, all squared away and reserved. Um, and the other one is August fifth. It is national night out again, so we're asking to push it back a week, just as we have previously. Counselor Erickson? Either day?
I prefer the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Either day works, all right. Mayor?
Um, I think either day is fine.
Okay, it's even better. All right, I will let Shannon know and uh, we'll send out a calendar invite and reminder for you guys. And we're on board for August twelfth since, as opposed to August fifth for national night out. Okay.
Why don't we have a meeting in between national night out? Could be part of the server bunnies.
It would be a larger uh, audience.
We might actually have somebody there.
It's not a bad idea. Okay. All right.
All righty. Which takes us to item D, Carlton pool survey results.
So I believe it was last month's meeting, September's meeting, uh, Shannon mentioned in the pool update that the pool was closed for the season and we actually sent out a survey. Uh, we sent it out on multiple platforms. Uh, it was on our website for quite a few weeks. We had it posted at the pool before they close, at the post office. We had it here on our big fancy TV board in the entryway as well as at the front and the paper copy. Um, we got thirty-one responses, so not too shabby. Um, in in your packet is the results of the questions as well as some of the typed written responses from our patrons' experiences from the summer. So it's available for your review and discussion if you so choose.
I think a lot of it is on the I think a lot of it has to do with kids in the summer and sleeping in. And um, on then also parent schedules and and shuttling back.
I was gonna say work schedules and, yeah.
So I think that has some component and and um, we, that's where it typically the open swims and stuff are.
So based on the responses of some folks complaining about the cleanliness and cleaning of the bathrooms is is that issue being addressed by the city for next year?
We actually have a very aggressive um, action going on the pool bathrooms. We have a um, fifteen-year-old working for the city, came as a pool guard. He uh, cleans the bathrooms there twice a week. We also have, um, this was the first week um, serviced a place, it's called Ultra Clean, it's through our uniform and um, cleaning supply company where they're coming in is steaming, sanitizing and degreasing. Um, the complaint isn't just on the pool bathrooms, it's also on the vault bathrooms down in the lower park. So there's steam cleaning though. During the pool season, we're gonna have a different um, aggressive approach to the bathrooms itself. Um, and that's gonna be highlighted in the training, I think. We're, when you're dealing with children that are cleaning, they're, they're just picking things up, they're not doing. Today I got a really good screenshot from Legend who's um, helping us a couple of days a week. And it looks a lot better, so the city's really striving. I don't know if you've noticed, but we're washing the garbage cans every day going down um, the tops of them, you know how they get really gunny? Um, Legend is being thanked constantly, um, and we're gonna keep continuing that. We're hearing about the bathrooms and we don't want people to think that the city of Carlton's bathrooms are not our number one priority. And um, so we have a a focus on it even now before pool season and pool season. Um, they're gonna get more of a what for from um, Amy and myself on what our expectations and we are spot checking even currently the work now and it'll be more frequent. Um, because it was very, the two things in the survey results that I think the city needs to act are umbrellas.
Right.
The hard part is those umbrellas, even getting commercial, they they break so quickly. But um, umbrellas and the bathrooms and the cleaning, so those were the two things I think the city really needs to have an action plan on. Um, we even had umbrellas donated to us and they they don't make it, they just don't hold up.
Have they looked into at all the metal structures that you can purchase from Costco and different places?
Like a gazeboy?
Or what about the shade, shade sails that anchor into like three corners?
We did that, we did this uh, shade sails, they didn't hold up to the wind, there's a crosswind. But we do have a heavier, we have one um, on a metal pole that it goes and it does work, but it's it's not enough. So it would be nice to have enough finances um, to buy another one in that heavy capacity, but they really want them at the tables and we just, we just go through them, so it's just a matter of we're gonna have to budget. Umbrellas is is needed, it's direct sun, I get it. We did do something also for the guards this year is they were roasting inside the um, area where they were, so we got an air conditioner, just a portable one, put in the window so they could cool off in the little guard room. They did, they didn't have that, we put, Miss Brian had an idea to put misters on. Um, but I think this was loud and clear about the bathrooms and umbrellas, so we have to have a more aggressive approach.
Another comment was uh, extending the date of closure, you know, further out after Labor Day.
Now that I can speak to very strongly, as you are well aware, the people that work in that pool are all kids that go back to school. They are back in school. We would have to um, you, you, we would have no staff unless you guys wanna become lifeguards and
Or unless we wanna pay somebody professionally.
Our, the kids that are down there are fifteen, sixteen-year-olds and even the ones that are older are going to college. So we closed there and even in that last week, we hardly have enough guards to cover and the attendance just drops because those kids go back to school. Um, so they're back in school also after Labor Day, even though it's still hot. So um, I don't think, sometimes that, I don't think that connects.
On Memorial Day, the Labor Day was tradition.
Yes.
America.
Yes, so would I love eventually as a capital improvement plan to put heating and cooling inside that building and put, have a space for yoga or purpose that building in the off-season, yes. Uh, I just think we're so project-heavy, but go ahead.
Do they have room in that building or was that building built and designed for that?
It was not built and designed for that, it's more locker room and bathroom. There is a large area that you could do a small yoga class or something small, but it really, other than that, there's
So it really wasn't designed as a community-type building?
It's a bathhouse.
It's, yeah.
Um, we did offer more programs, more teen swims, we had aerobics introduced. Uh, we did start yoga, but then our yoga instructor um, ended up blowing her knee out and Yes, so I'm very passionate about it. We had a lot of good energy um, and a couple of lessons learned also. Uh, I think it was a great pool season. But I do think we need to have some due diligence on shade cover for the patrons during the hotness. And I think with the climate, we just need to know, we need to provide some type of shade out there. Um, but granted, I do agree, we should have some more permanent things that we just, we can put it out, those umbrella, that lasted, but that, it took us two years to get that one sale.
It wa- it took quite a few wells and it ended up being a lot more expensive than we expected to, the install was quite a bit more than what we expected.
And then we did try the other sun sails, but it 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 didn't last it at all. So um, it just has to be heavy-duty um, umbrellas and we have to know they are one season if they even make it the whole season. Unless we get some money for some permanent infrastructure, because as you know, the funds are limited for materials and supplies for
So do the costs need to go up to supply this, these items?
We did raise our costs this year. Um, we did a comparator to our su- uh, surrounding um, We did a comparator to our surrounding communities and we did generate some more revenue. But the hard part is the chlorine and the chemicals also increased in costs. So we're barely covering that and then you have your guards. So, and it's a very small season, it's three months and it's, this is a community asset that we provide to our, our kids and our community. And that's how we have to look at it. It's never going to be out of the red. And I do know that the guards love working there, even guards who work at other pools because it's summer, want to come work at Carlton Pool. We had no problems getting guards this year. So good kids, we, they were really good kids this year. But again, coaching and mentoring children on how to clean a bathroom and we just need to be, so as we are training currently a 15-year-old, it's amazing when you spot check and you show them what your expectations are, how they can rise to the occasion. So we're going to have a little, Amy and I already have a game plan about those spot checks because I don't want people complaining about the bathrooms. And I want to feel if I go to the park, I feel good going into the bathroom. And I, I think that our community wants that also.
Well, there's the other part of that too, which is those bathrooms get used by some pretty shaky characters too.
The PD has had.
And yeah, I walked by there one day and you had the police department standing there knocking on the door trying to get this guy out of the bathroom because he'd locked himself in. I guess they finally got him out, but you know, people kind of need to remember that not everybody is really good about taking care of the bathroom when they go in there.
They get, they get used as sleeping quarters. We are very fortunate though, we've only had one graffiti incident, I think. And we immediately took care of it. The PD found who they were. They did their restitution through the juvenile courts and they, they've turned into some good kids. I think it was a good interaction with the PD, but it was a, it was a children graffiti thing, not an adult. So I, I think we're making good steps, but I think we've really got a good focus on hearing the community about their complaints. And I do know that Legend, who is our teenager right now, gets thanked all the time just being out there in his orange shirt, washing garbage cans and doing the bathroom. So very low cost for our community.
Is he pulling a wagon around town with his pool? Okay, I saw him today going down Main Street.
Yeah, he's been working in, so this is a success story. He went down to that first pocket park in JR Meadows 1, right behind, right as you enter the park on the left. And the whole park was full of dog presence. He spent a day getting it all picked up, got the can done. Amy in the meantime notified the apartments that were doing that, we're putting a sign in there. It's a $500 fine, I don't know if you know that, to not pick up the waste. He went down there today, we are limbing up and getting it prepared for winter. Public Works has been working on the irrigation and there was, nobody had left any presents. And he's also getting thanked down there. We appreciate what you're doing. So it, it's a good thing and he's been working in Lad Park. I don't know if you guys have noticed, the weeds are going at bay and trimming up and just trying to just do a little bit extra for our aesthetics and our community. But that, that dog thing was huge, it was a big deal. And we were kind of waiting to see after it cleaned up how it was going to be. He said there was nothing today. There were apples from the tree. So.
So was that mostly coming out from the, you think from the people in the apartments or?
I don't think so. It was actually, Amy told me that the people from the apartments actually put the dog waste station there and the bags and he was very supportive. We do know that there was one dog that possibly was coming from there. Only a public works have been keeping an eye on it. I think it was, there's a lot of people in that area and I, I think once a problem builds up, I think it continues to build if they think you don't care.
Yeah.
So it, we've had a good success, but we go on weed patrol. So it's, it's working, it's, it's, you know, just a temporary thing. And we keep thinking if we keep mentoring a lifeguard to help out on these little things, that, that will be helpful. Trying to give them a little bit of stuff.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Do I have a motion to adjourn? There a second? And forth, it's unanimous.